These awards, folks, they recognise projects which prioritise and reward good health, excellent services and a safe environment for our older adults. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, please, because I just want to run through a couple of things. We have eight awards in total. The rowdy bunch are down there, I have my eye on you. We have eight awards in total, folks, and we'll be inviting all our finalists up on stage. The presentation will be made after the starters, the main course and the dessert. But before all that, we're going to kick off on a high note, quite literally. They're in great voice, absolutely great voice, because we heard them a little earlier on. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you a real treat. This is Dublin City's age-friendly choir, comprising the Memory Lane Choir, the Happy Voices Choir and the Cromlin Community Choir. Take it away.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We're now going to do a song which I think is very appropriate for age-friendly. It's "You Make Me Feel So Young", and please feel free to join in in any of these songs with us. You make me feel so young. You make me feel so young. You make me feel there's something to stop. And every time I see you, I'm such happy. It's a bit good, the moment that you see. I wanna go play hide and seek. I wanna go and dance with you, just like the night blue. You and I are just like the couple of us. Running across the meadow. If you love me, I'll forget me not. You make me feel so young. You make me feel there's something to stop. Yes, we are, and the wonderful place to be home. In the rain. I wanna be where I do today. Cause you make me feel so. You make me feel so. You make me feel so young. Thank you. We are going to do two more songs, two songs now, one after the other. The first one includes what is known as a quad librett. In other words, where you have two songs or two tunes going on at the same time. And it's from the show "Call Me Madame", and we follow that with what I often refer to as our Audrey Hepburn moment, "Moon River". And just while we stop, just to introduce our wonderful pianist this evening, pianist and composer, Celine Campbell. Thank you.
Oh, dear maker, your heart maker. Wherever you're going, I know it will wait. To river, oh, to see the world. There's such a lovely world to see. Where I heard the same river most. Waiting on the bed. My popular friend. The river of me. River, water than wine. Oh, singing the stars of day. Oh, dear maker, your heart maker. Wherever you're going, I know it will wait. To river, oh, to see the world. There's such a lovely world to see. Where I heard the same river most. Waiting on the bed. My popular friend. The river of me.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The choir's got to take a couple of minutes break while I sing something else for you. Somewhere enchanted evening. You may see a stranger. You may see a stranger across a crowded room. And somehow you know. You know even better. That somewhere you see her again and again. Somewhere enchanted evening. Someone may laugh in. You may hear her laughing across a crowded room. And night after night, as strange as it seems. The sound of the laughter will ring in your dreams. Who can explain it? Who can tell why? Fools give you reasons, wise men never try. Somewhere enchanted evening. When you find your true love. When you feel a call you, across a crowded room. Then fly to the sky and make her your own. All through your life, you may dream all alone. Once you have found her, never let her go. Once you have found her, never let her go. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Just before our next song, as Sharon said, we are... This is a combination of three choirs: the Memory Lane Choir from Cromlin, from the CCMA; the Cromlin Community Choir; and the Happy Voices Choir from Maryfield Nursing Home in Chapel Lizard. And we have a range of ages, but we are absolutely honoured that one of our members from Maryfield, Maureen, sitting in the front, just wave, Maureen, or stand if you like. Maureen recently celebrated her 105th birthday. So... And she is a marvel. Thank you. Okay, the Lambeth Walk.
Find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Every year to Lambeth Town, winter into Lambeth Town. You find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Every street and DC, you rush down and DC. Why don't you stay there, stay there? Once you get down Lambeth Town, every evening, every day. You find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Every year to Lambeth Town, winter into Lambeth Town. You find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Every time you Lambeth Town, every evening, every day. You find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Every street and DC, you rush down and DC. Why don't you stay there, stay there? Once you get down Lambeth Town, every evening, every day. You find a soul, do in the Lambeth Walk. Our second last song is one that might be appropriate at the moment
in that a certain republic on the other side of the pond might need all the prayers it can get. This is the battle hymn of the republic.
My eyes have seen the glory of the promise of the Lord. He is ramping up the millions where the grapes are ripe. He has the silver lightning of his perilous fore. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. I have seen him in the watch for the love of the circle man. There will drift him out of the evening into the night. I am a believer, a saint, a friend, a worshipper of the earth. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. In the glory of the days, I sit across the sea. With the glory in his shoes, the land was given to you and me. As he died to make them holy, as he died to make them free. While God is racing on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. Glory, glory, hallelujah. His truth is marching on.
Thank you, and it's been a pleasure for us all to sing for you this evening. We are going to leave you with a Dublin jewel, and you can imagine yourselves sauntering down Grafton Street as we sing this.
I'm in northern, I'm in southern, I'm in east or west. I'm just a rolling stone. And there's nothing to lose, there's nothing to lose. Just a little town like all my own. Dublin can be heaven with coffee and a lemon and a stroll. And see the dream. There's no need to hurry, there's no need to worry, you're a king. And the lady is the queen. For Grafton Street's a wonderland, there's magic in the air. There are diamonds in the lady's eyes and gold on her hair. And if you don't believe me, come and meet me there. In Dublin, on a sunny summer morning. I've been here and I've been there, I saw the rainbow land. But the walk of old I doubt. I've been over the top, but still I can't forget this end. Here are the leaves that even when we grow. Dublin can be heaven with coffee and a lemon and a stroll. And see the dream. There's no need to hurry, there's no need to worry, you're a king. And the lady is the queen. For Grafton Street's a wonderland, there's magic in the air. There are diamonds in the lady's eyes and gold on her hair. And if you don't believe me, come and meet me there. In Dublin, on a sunny summer morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, wouldn't that ladden your heart? It really would. And I should say that among our choristers, we have those living with Alzheimer's and dementia and memory loss, as well as their friends and their carers and their families. So a really, really great honour to have them on stage with us this evening. And as for Maureen... Maureen, I think Maureen is pulling our leg, I really do. I'm looking at her now. There's not a wrinkle, folks, not a wrinkle. Maureen, I want a selfie with Maureen later on. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have... Oh, and I should have said, of course, Gerry, wasn't he pitch perfect? Absolutely pitch perfect. And Celine. Celine is the modest one here. And of course, Sister Bernadette. Sister Bernadette was imploring me to sing along. I said, "You haven't heard me sing, sister". And also Joe Fitzgerald. Their tireless work and commitment. For this choir, the three choirs together, really cannot be underestimated. They're absolute troopers, and we're very, very lucky to have people like this in our society. I'm sure you'll all agree. Folks, we're going to... Yes, thank you. I think that's well deserved, well deserved.
Deivochardje. Deivochardje. A dus boire by waith le marag, wi' mae an saiste, vahan sean liv. Er son ard ver bol yathat leo, an corlor Paul Macalaf. Agus chur am faolte o chri roif, go de an ort, speshil de stariol shu, park an croicig. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, I know there are some of my colleagues here, councillor John Paul Feeley and councillor John Coonan. And I know that we're expecting the Minister of State later on. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Lord Mayor this evening to welcome you all to the National Age Friendly Recognition and Achievement Awards. People today, ladies and gentlemen, are healthier and living longer than ever before, with one in four of us here in the city aged over 65, a figure that I know is set to increase. And the Age Friendly Programme is our way of trying to ensure that we're ready to serve our citizens in their own communities. The programme, nurtured for a number of years, I know, by our own Deputy Chief Executive, Brendan Kenny, I think there's Brendan there, is now an integrated programme and run under the capable leadership of Meath County Council. Dublin City Council is very proud to be hosting tonight's awards, and indeed, we have hosted a number of age-friendly events in the past, including one in 2011, where the historic international Dublin Declaration on Age-friendly Cities and Communities was signed by over 40 mayors from across the world as a sign of strong political leadership, willing to champion actions that improve the quality of lives of our older people. And in 2014, the City Council hosted a ceremony in City Hall declaring full engagement of all our 31 local authorities across Ireland to take actions to improve the quality of life of people in the state. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a particular interest as a local public representative in the area of caring for dementia. And it's an issue that, I suppose, came to the fore in my political life during a campaign around 2013, 2014, where after each day's campaigning, I'd go home at night and think about the different things that had come up during the day. And every night during that campaign, I found myself saying, "Oh my God, Gerry, you met another woman or another gentleman who was caring for a loved one at home, living with dementia". And I have come to realise that people who are caring for loved ones with dementia become hugely isolated in our society. And ever since then, I suppose, I have been campaigning around raising awareness for carers who are caring for loved ones with dementia. And I have to say, ladies and gentlemen... I have to say, ladies and gentlemen, that our Chief Executive, Owen Keegan, has been hugely, hugely supportive, as has our Deputy Chief Executive, Brendan Kenny. I've put forward a few suggestions and a few proposals, and on each occasion, those proposals have been agreed unanimously by my colleagues on Dublin City Council and supported 100% by Owen Keegan and Brendan Kenny. The last initiative that I proposed, I'm delighted to say, is that all of the staff on Dublin City Council, I think there's near on 6,000 staff... on Dublin City Council, I think there's near on 6,000 staff employed by the City Council now, that all of the staff will have dementia awareness training made available to them so that each time any one of us in Dublin City Council comes into contact with either a person living with dementia or a person who is caring for a loved one with dementia, our staff will be able to, I suppose, be aware of how that person's life can be improved or, I suppose, how we can make it less painful by being aware of what the difficulties are for people living with dementia. So that's, I suppose, the issue that's of huge importance to me. And that's one of the reasons why I'm really pleased to be here this evening. And also to thank the Chief Executive and Brendan himself for the support of that issue, which is an issue that I campaigned very seriously on. I just have a couple of more issues to mention in relation to the Dublin City Alliance, and that is the priorities. One of the priorities, I'm going to just list three priorities and then I'll finish up, let you get on with your food. The first priority is housing and making it possible for people to stay at home, supporting them to age comfortably in their communities. The second priority is recognising the importance of transport and the built environment, which in turn enhances ease of access and movement for older people across the city. And finally, thirdly, and most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, good communication so as to raise awareness of Dublin City's Age-Friendly Programme and to ensure that older people across the city have access to information about what's happening in their communities. These awards, ladies and gentlemen, are a great showcase for what can be done together, celebrating our creativity, our ability to change things for the better, as well as influencing policies that impact our lives. They reflect the power of people using their positive experience to serve our communities. I hope you all enjoy the evening. And I'd like to thank you very much for everything that you've done to improve the quality of lives of people in our city. Gomilema Hoggov.
Thank you, Deirdre. And Deirdre name-checked Brendan Kenny, the Deputy Chief Executive of Dublin City Council. And I think Brendan is going to have a few words with us now. I believe he's very shy, so they'll be a quick few words. Good man, Brendan.
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of Dublin City Council, I would like to welcome everybody here tonight. I want to thank the Deputy Lord Mayor, Deirdre Heaney, for giving her time to be here. And I know Deirdre has a special interest in this whole issue. Thank you also to the Minister, Damien English, who's on his way, for agreeing to be here tonight as well. And also councillors from all over the country that are here. Also welcome to representatives from business, from government departments, from state agencies, chief executives of local authorities, officials from local authorities and the Gardaí. But I want to give a special welcome to all the community groups and all the volunteers that are here tonight from all over the country, who have given huge time and effort towards bettering the quality of lives for all the people and giving opportunities for all the people. I want to thank Jackie McGuire, Chief Executive of Meath County Council, for facilitating and hosting the National Age Friendly Programme. To Catherine McQuiggin, who was the real driver behind the whole programme throughout the country, and our team down there. And finally, I just want to thank my own team, Beatrice Catali, who's put a huge amount of work into today, tonight and over the last few weeks. And the great team of helpers that she put together from various parts of the City Council. So great credit to them. So I hope you all have a really good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brendan. Now, it's only a fool that would keep a hungry man or a hungry woman from his or her dinner. So I promise you, just one quick speech left, and that is from Catherine McQuiggin. And I know you'll give her your full time and attention. Catherine is Chief Officer with Age Friendly Ireland.
We on. Welcome, everybody. Just two minutes of your time to follow up on Brendan. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here tonight. I, first of all, want to just say that the place looks absolutely amazing. And I think we can give Beatrice and Sylvia and all the team a fantastic round of applause. It looks really, really great. I just very quickly want to say, before we go into the meal and into the awards tonight, it's a very, very special time of year because it's a celebration of all that is good. The Age Friendly Programme, hosted as a shared service in Meath County Council, is, I suppose, recognising all the good work that's happened at grassroots level. This year, we slightly altered the programme. It's the fourth year of the awards. And we actually, our judging panel, headed up by Tom Dowling and the three other judges, who actually toured the country and went round and really witnessed the impact that these projects are having. And I think it's suffice to say that some of the judges told me they found it very, very humbling to actually see what the impact is on the ground. We are doing great work and tonight is the celebration of that work. And on behalf of my Chief Executive, Jackie McGuire, I want to say a particular thank you to Brendan Kenny, who has been one of the most altruistic local government representatives that I've had the pleasure of working with for the last 10 years. Thank you, Brendan, for tonight, for all your staff. Both Jackie and I, who you'll hear from later, are really grateful for putting on this fantastic show tonight. We just want everybody to enjoy it. And thank you to the shortlisted projects and all the projects, and make sure you have a wonderful celebration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, councillors and gentlemen. I'm delighted to be here this evening to join in the celebration of your achievements. I think it's hugely important to recognise, honour and celebrate the achievements of people who make the Catholic life easier for others. What is so special about these awards is the collaborative nature of all the entries involving the state and voluntary sector working together specifically to make a real difference to an older person's quality of life. My colleague, judges and I discovered from the large number of entries we had to shortlist from and our fantastic inspiration judging lists, that Ireland is fast becoming a great place for all of you. I'm not rushing the old part of myself just to say that, get that out of the way. But there is a real recognition of the needs of older people and that they also have a voice. We witnessed extraordinary volunteer work being done by large groups of people. And very importantly, we saw local authorities, state and semi-state bodies demonstrating real practical commitment to ensuring the wishes and needs of the older community are listened to and considered and decisions are being made affecting them. We saw wonderful intergenerational projects and we witnessed fantastic singing and dancing. We met older fitness fanatics and silver surfers who were very much more adept in technology than the judges in my hat. We saw care projects which had enormous health benefits. And we saw so many initiatives to help loneliness and isolation. In summary, we saw that connectivity, participation in activities, mobility to travel, health, safety and companionship are so important to the wellbeing of all of us and particularly our older citizens. I wish to acknowledge and thank my fellow judges, Bernie O'Brien, Arthur Carmody and Mary Collier. All of whom generously gave up their time and expertise to judge the Age Friendly Awards. Really and truly, every participant was a winner. And I don't mind saying, it was an extremely difficult task, where our hearts put a lot of pressure on our minds as we wanted all the entries to win. But this is the first year we've discounted the shortlist of entries and we were honoured to have the opportunity to do so and see first hand our work. We were fortunate as judges to have Sylvia McCarty and Rachel Levy supporting us in an exceptionally competent, facility and professional manner. I want to acknowledge the work of the Age Friendly Ireland. And it must be supported and included, please support it. And it's wonderful going all over Ireland and seeing the local authorities and seeing the support of host on Meath County Council and the Chief Executive, Jack McGuire, are giving to the Age Friendly Awards and Age Friendly Ireland. It's just amazing in the space of two years what's happened. And under excellent leadership, of course, of Captain Green for老年病患. Finally, thank you to this committee. Congratulations for a wonderful shortlist of entries. Enjoy your night.
Thank you so much, Tom. Let's get these awards underway, ladies and gentlemen. The first award of the evening is the Age Friendly Community Innovation Award. Excuse me, the job I'm not broadcasting tonight. Now, sponsored by the Department of Rural and Community Development. Let me tell you a little bit about this award. The voice of the older person, as Tom said, is at the heart of the Age Friendly Cities and Counties Programme. The programme is designed and implemented with them and not for them. This award recognises those innovative projects that are driven by older people for older people. These projects not only enhance the lives of older people, but benefit the community at large. Here to present the award on behalf of the department is Barbara Nick Anderson. The shortlisted projects in this award category are as follows. We'll have you up on stage. Put a twinkle in your wrinkle, Terence Martin. A Stitch Down Memory Lane Roscommon Travel Health Project. Kirkcaldy Corrigan North Aling Mayfield Integrated Community Development Project. And last but not least, Thomas Hemshend, Thomas Callaghan. Now, Barbara will present all our shortlisted candidates with their certificates and photos will be taken. Hello. Okay, so certificates have been presented, so photo captured for poster sheet. Shall we find out the winner? Barbara will do the honors. The winner of the Age Friendly Community Innovation Award is... Put a twinkle in your wrinkle, Terence Martin. Well done, well done indeed to all our finalists and our winner votes. And you can exit stage now. Well done. Our second award category, ladies and gentlemen, is sponsored by Omhust. It's the Age Friendly Communications Award. And here to present this award from Omhust is Ailie O'Leary. Let's be happy. Let me tell you a quick fact of this award, folks. A lack of access to information is often cited as a barrier to aging well in Ireland. The ability to access clear and concise information can impact a range of aspects of an older person's life, from health and wellbeing to social connectedness and financial security. This award recognises efforts being made around the country to bridge the information gap. Let's hear the shortlisted projects. Acorn Age Friendly Tablet, an initiative of Figo County Council, Limerick City and County Council and Zay County Council. Friendly Call Cork, Cork City Partnership. Your Vote, Your Voice, Easy to Read Guide Voting, an initiative of Martin County Council. And Ailie will present all our finalists with their certificates. We have photographs taken and then we have our winner. We have a cast of contestants here on the stage ladies and gentlemen. There is but one winner. Who is that winner I wonder? Ailie has the magic envelope. It looks like the Oscars couple of years ago now. Hello there. Congratulations to all the shortlisted individuals. And we will introduce someone to both. The Age Friendly Communication Award goes to Acorn. It's time for the chimpanzees team party to appear on stage to know that. Let's have our photograph. Congratulations, Acorn. And the Age Friendly Tablet. Well done, congratulations. You can exit stage left. Take the seating position. Okay. Now, we're into our third award ladies and gentlemen. And this award is sponsored by... There's hugs and there's kisses and embraces and everything. Can you take exit stage left? We need a store manager up here I think. All right, let's get into our third award ladies and gentlemen. This one is sponsored by the Department of Transport, Tourism and Sport. Let me tell you a little bit about this award first of all. Getting to where you want to go and when you want to go is so important to so many older people. This category recognises the vital difference. Now you don't want me to become all school marbish do you? That's not, that's not a pretty sight. Thank you folks. This is the final award before we break for dinner. I should have brought my whip. Great you might enjoy that one. Okay, let's get on to our third award ladies and gentlemen. Shh, thank you. Getting to where you want to go and when you want to go is so important to so many older people. This category recognises the vital difference that access to good quality and reliable transport options can make to an older person. And here to present the award on behalf of the department is Mr Tim Gaston. While Tim makes his way on stage, allow me to introduce a shortlist of projects in this category. Thank you Tim. Dublin Bus providing a greater travel experience for our older customers. Dublin Bus ladies and gentlemen. Connected Mayo. Addressing isolation through community transport. Mayo Community Transport Local Link Mayo. And the last but not least, connecting and collecting rural communities with leash offering through the Rural Transport Programme, an initiative of Local Link Leash Offering. Those are our shortlisted projects ladies and gentlemen. And very soon... Mayo, Mayo is very shy tonight. Where's Mayo? See Mayo don't like coming to Crow Park. That's what the problem is. They have to heebie-jeebies. Where's Mayo? Okay come on. This might be the only award that Mayo get at Crow Park. All right. Let's be happy then. Over here, have your photograph which they will... Well done, last but not least, let's have Local Link Leash Offering. All right, those are our three shortlisted projects ladies and gentlemen. Shall we find out who the winner is? Tim will do the honors. Tim? Do we have him for a roll?
Okay, so, um, I'm driven. Peter Ramley on your award. Goes to... Connect to Mayo.
And congratulations to Connect to Mayo. Folks, thank you very much for your attention.
All right ladies and gentlemen. Loathe as I am to interrupt that absolutely delicious meal. I am going to ask you please for a little bit of hush because we do have a very special guest. He's taken time out from his extraordinarily busy schedule to be with us this evening. And I know that you will show him some appreciation. Ladies and gentlemen, would you welcome to the stage Jamie English, Minister of State for the Department of Housing, Planning and Local Government.
Thanks Angela, thank you for the introduction. As a lead man of all the candidates to call Pat. We're not here asking her anything anymore so it's a pleasure to be here. And you see, so thanks Captain for having me this very early. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I'm delighted to be here tonight for the fourth National, um, fourth annual National Age Friendly Ireland recognition. An achievement award ceremony. It's very important, an award ceremony to recognise best practice and innovation and access that you're all achieving in a many different areas when it comes to age friendly development as well. And I recognise the amount of work they're doing all over the country and the amount of focus they're involving as well. So I'm delighted to have the chance to come out here on behalf of my department. And I have the pleasure of having to have a chat with you tonight to give you a chance to present some of the awards that are also dear of individual stories as well and the different programs that are involved in yourself as well. Tonight I have the honour of presenting the Age Friendly Ireland award. And I want to thank Age Friendly Ireland for the opportunity to do so. I know that the work done by those who have participated in this competition this year, it's not just excellent in its own right, but will make significant contributions to the lives of older people and indeed of the community as a whole. Because we are very often talking how the department are making an impact through the different programs we have. But all the events and the programs are involved in, except from the housing project I've seen. It is having an impact on the community. It doesn't just provide a home for somebody and a family and somebody that's aging. But actually, if you see it ever so ago, it has become the centre point of the villages and towns all over the country as well. And that's what we're trying to achieve here, that sense of place, sense of pride as it is as well. The awards recognise innovation and achievement in age friendly projects around Ireland. And are focused on the age forehead of organisation teams that are considered to be critical to the development of an age friendly community. Most of you guys will know what they are, but just to protrude them again for the judges who are here who have to use them. These include good quality and reliable transport, attractive and safe outdoor space and buildings, options for different types of housing, including housing with supports when needed, good health services in the community, security in the home, not becoming a big focus, a lot of workshops over the last year, that's a security element. Soaps of participation by older people, age aware business and communication and information. Thankfully over 100 submissions were received by the judging panel and 25 of those were shortlisted for prizes. It is hard to know and I'm delighted to see that there are over 100 proposals submitted today because a lot of what we've been doing over the last couple of years are trying to encourage a lot more submissions and proposals and schemes to come forward. But to know that there's 100 now is even, is pretty good enough here for tonight. They're all wonderful examples of people and organisations collaborating, collaborating to bring a project to conclusion.
Because both myself and Minister Daly, we realise over the last couple of years, it can be very difficult to bring somebody's housing projects to completion. It can be a complicated system, can be delayed with red tape and different departments and so on. And we're trying to find a way around that, a new way of doing business and I'll touch on that in a second as well. But many of the schemes here tonight have found a way through that or around that. And have been, a lot of your projects over the years as well, some of them have a history of seven or eight years getting to completion. Others were a lot quicker as well. But we're going to try and copy that model you have and roll it out and achieve a lot more schemes around the country as quick as we possibly can as well. And those of you who know me or who have apparently spoken at these events in the past, know full well that have a very particular interest in the development of housing solutions for older people and people who are aging. It's a very, very important part of our work that I am fully committed to. And I know that Jim Daly on behalf of the Department of Health is fully committed to that as well. That's why we value competitions such as these, which stimulate innovative new ideas that can be harnessed by policymakers at national level and copied and rolled out. And as such, I and my department will continue to promote and encourage such work wherever it is going on because the housing needs of our citizens and certainly our citizens as we age are an issue of the highest priority for us all in this room and certainly at government and I know at local authority level as well. I know when we address in a group like this, you're very much focused on the agenda of aging and you know what the stats are like. But we have to again face facts, we're heading for a situation by 2046 that will have over one and a quarter million people in this category who want to avail of the services and the housing that we're trying to provide and discuss here tonight as well. We know that we need to act now to ensure that we can look after our road of citizens into the future. It's a responsibility that we have across many departments. And I'm delighted that over the last couple of years, through a lot of the networks and programs that all government departments are coming together to pool their resources and to bring, to drive innovation and new thinking as well. As individuals, none of us can avoid the inevitability of aging. But there are many things we can do to prepare well for that time, just as there are many ways in which the state can frame its policies to support a need and lead that preparation. I was on an event earlier on tonight and that's why I was a little bit late, where we're talking with students of planning and all those who are getting involved in the planning sector. And we discussed the importance of poetry in Ireland 2040, taking a long term view of this country and planning ahead and putting in place the planning policies today that will help us achieve success in the future as well. And I mentioned tonight that we were, that I was coming to this event, that we were looking at the Age Friendly Programme and at its importance in the planning and in strategic planning and to make sure that we get our ambitions right in this sector as well. Thankfully the national planning framework will guide us in this. The aim of that framework is to put in place a strategic planning to ensure that our cities, our town and villages are attractive places for people to live, to work in and to grow old in. To have balanced regional developments strengthening both rural and urban communities. To put in place a sustainable and accessible public transport to invest and to invest in enhanced public spaces, public services and amenities in the community and to conserve natural resources as well. And I know through the work of Catherine and all our team, well as local authorities, it's driven through us all about the age friendly towns and villages and the importance that if we design a town and a village and a space to be age friendly, it'll be friendly for everybody and it encourages us all to come and spend time in our towns and villages and be active participants in our communities as well. Planning for such a breadth of activity can only be achieved with a whole of government and community approach. And I think tonight on these awards tap into that community element, that community approach. Where all of you come together through the many different groups you're involved in and work with our say agencies and work with our various departments as well. Events such as these showcase great ideas and best practice. And they reassure us that there are people in the community that are thinking about and planning for the future in a spirit of enthusiasm and generosity. And it is generosity because it does take a lot of your time. And I see a lot of familiar faces here that have been at all the events I've been at over the last couple of years as well because you are committed to this and you're committed to making that impact that we actually get results, not just plans. In addition to this, the Age Friendly Ireland Programme, which sponsors tonight's awards, anchored as it is in the structures of local government and rightly so, and now a local authority shared service, is a key driver of integrated, sustainable planning for older people as part of the global programme. And I think Catherine, that what you've achieved over the last number of years is to bring all of us together to really have that joined up approach. I have to take a moment to commend Age Friendly Ireland, who have worked tirelessly to develop that programme in the 31 local authorities and have been particularly influential in the development of housing policy for older people in my own department. I see Alan down here for my own department and many others as well. We've worked very closely with Age Friendly Ireland over the last, would be year and a half as we brought that policy to the stage at the Zach now. So Age Friendly Ireland, I want to be very clear, you're a much valued partner of government and local authorities. And we look forward to continue to work with you and the team well into the future. And I'm glad that team has expanded now, it's nearly doubled because I often say there's like this hundreds of these, but it really true there's only one or two and now we have four permanent. But your reach is way beyond that as well and it's important too. And I said before as a government that we have to support older people to live in their own home with dignity and independence for as long as possible. And that's what we're trying to achieve. We have that document now, which is a new framework, new relationship between the Department of Health, the Department of Housing, where we come together now and this new body there driving that across 40 actions, which will help us probably copy best practice and roll out best practice and cut out some of that red tape as well. But I want to be clear because there might be some confusion over the last day or two. That drive and that policy change for housing for those who are aging is about choice. And about sense of place and giving people the option that when they, if they ever feel they want to rightsize or to change, that it's a choice and a choice that they can make. Because if we plan it right and spend our money correctly, people will have the option, will have the choice to move to a more suitable house only if they ever want to. And we know from all the research, and it was clarified again today in research as well, that people want to stay in their own house. And through that policy document, we will support people for as long as they possibly can to stay in their own house. to stay in their own house and to have that sense of place as well. But it's very clear from us too with the research we made that people do say to us, at some stage, they would be happy to maybe move if it's in the same community, if it's with the same people they've been living with for many years, if they can continue to have that sense of place and stay there as well. And that's our ambition here through that document, through the 48 action plan with the help of you all in this room, is to have people that choice to make sure that in years to come, there will be the provision of accommodation for older people in all our towns and villages and of a very high quality as well. Again, just back to the main reason why I'm here tonight, I'm here to present the Department of Housing, Planning and Local Government Award for Age Friendly Housing. And there are three project shortlists in this category, which I must commend to you for their excellence. The first of these three is the Age Friendly Housing Design Competition, pioneered by Cork County Age Friendly Programme for second-year degree students from the Cork Centre for Architectural Education of both UCC and CIT, which is to design an older person's housing scheme as lifetime adaptable homes that are flexibly designed to provide for the changes in size and structure of a family over a period of time. As a key partner of the project, the Cork County Architects Unit nominated a site in Kinsale, one of the Corks' age-friendly towns for this year's competition. And you can see it there on the screens as well. The second project is in Limerick. Must the Cork bunch down there or maybe the Limerick bunch? Are you keeping up with me? It's very juicy. You're doing well. This is me going slow. I do normally speak a lot faster. But the second project. The second project is in Culvertill Court in South Hill, Limerick. It's an architect-designed development for tenants of Limerick City and County Council, constructed with the possible future needs of his older residents, allowing for aging in place. The design of the facility has fostered a great sense of community, providing residents with a unique opportunity to feel safe and secure while having access to a wide range of services. And I've been in some of the homes there. I'm not sure if some of the residents are here. But it was a fabulous place to visit and to engage and to spend time. We didn't get tea that day, lads, so we'll be back for that sometime. But a lot of the residents there feel very much that they have a chance to continue living in the same place, but in a new house that's better suited to their needs as well. And that's what we're going to try and achieve. Actually, they're up there on the left as well. The third project is St Joseph's Court in Clifton, in County Galway. I'm glad we've got a Galway bunch as well. Which is a shelter development provided with Cluitt housing for older people, including returning immigrants of whom many have been living in poor quality accommodation with no access to services or supports. Cluitt provides a range of services essential to the physical and mental wellbeing of the residents. Just to say, these projects have created a hallmark of excellence in housing, highlighting best practice, innovation and cross-sectoral partnership from the designs completed by the Cork students to the delivery of the projects that are transforming the lives of older citizens in both Limerick and Galway. We need to design well to provide the appropriate environment for those who will live in the developments we provide. And we need to deliver well for the tenants and on the ground to provide the kind of comfortable and secure life envisaged for older citizens in the World Head Organisation's teams. I have no doubt from my knowledge of these projects that they fulfil these requirements admirably. And I've no doubt the judges haven't gone through all the different submissions. I can see why you whittled it down to the tree as well. Just to conclude, before I present the housing award, there are a few people that I would like to mention for their ongoing commitment to the Age Friendly Programme and to this event over the last four years. I want to thank all the chief executives of the local authorities and their Age Friendly Programme managers who are key to achieving the aims of the programme. In particular, I want to thank our county manager from County Meath, Jackie McGuire, for hosting the Age Friendly Services Meath County Council. I think, Jackie, you could go for president next the way this is going over the last... The last couple of months everywhere to go was promoting Jackie. But again, I reckon I can see the work firsthand, not just at a county level but at a national level, that Jackie's had in leading that and bringing in the Age Friendly Service into Meath County Council as a shared service as well and working with all the other local authorities right throughout the country as well. While Jackie was doing that, poor Barry Lynch also gets a job and a lot of jobs. And Barry's been great in assisting us and sharing a subgroup and driving the actions of our action plan for our Aging Population Policy Statement. Again, just to finish up, I also want to thank the Older People's Council, whose input into the work of the Age Friendly Programme is invaluable. Indeed, we're lucky enough as a department to have Rosaline and Breed, two of the council members, on the Housing Options Implementation Group. And I have met them at some of the meetings. I know they won't say quietly on a board anyway. And they'll certainly be part of driving the agenda, which is what we want, strengthened vice is there, having an impact as well. I want to also say a big thanks to the members of the National Advisory Group and particularly those who sponsored the awards on the night, the members of the NGO forum, the judging panel of the awards and Brendan Kenny of Dublin City Council for hosting tonight's event. I know Pat is down there taking notes for next year. Pat Dowling, as a Moos de Clare. I want to say the best of luck and I look forward to next year's event down there as well. But no better man to take it on. Finally, I've mentioned the wonderful work of Age Friendly Ireland and their team earlier on. But I want to single them out again by saying I want to thank Catherine, Sylvia, Emir and Rachel. Your work on behalf of older citizens is of immense importance to the life of this country. And we thank you sincerely for the commitment and dedication you bring to it every day of the year, right throughout day and night as well. Keep up the good work and thank you very much.
All right. Well, the minister name-checked our shortlisted candidates. I think we need to have them up on stage for a photo. So could we have the rowdy bunch down the Limerick crowd? Isn't that right? Yes. Let's have Collevet Court, South Hill, Limerick City and County Council. As well as Age Friendly Housing Design Competition, that's Cork County Age Friendly Programme. And last but not least, St Joseph's Court or Cluitt's housing. We'll bring you up on this side of the stage first, folks. This side first. Sorry, Damian. You stay there. There's a bit of a... Yes. Okay, hello. You can hang on there. You're Cork. Oh, you're very kind. How are you? I'm loving the hair. It's very Cleopatra. It's great though, isn't it? Can you check? Is my mic on the back or is it slipping down? It's there, is it? It feels like it's slipping down. It slipped on perfect. It's me being hyper. Oh, no, it's stuff. No, I thought it was falling. I'm... Go on, don't be shy. Don't be shy. Your moment in the sun.
Thank you.
Well done. This is Limerick. Yes. Now, wasn't it worth... Yes. Well, listen. Winner's all right, hey? Yes. Manus, is it? Is my mic... Is my mic secure? It feels like it's falling down. It's not. Is it? Is that what it is? Okay. Okay. It's grand. It's fine. I just, I didn't want to have a wardrobe malfunction. Well done. And congratulations to all our shortlisted projects in this award category. Minister English will now announce the winner for us. Can we have a little bit of hush, please? Please. Thank you. All yours, Damian.
Thanks very much, Anne. And the winner is the Cork County Age Friendly Programme. Well done, guys.
Great answer. Check. Check. Well done. Well done, Cork. And thank you very much, Minister. And you know what? I'm really, really struck by something tonight, folks. We have Mayo going home with an award from Croak Park. And we have a minister in this government involved in a housing award. I mean, what are the chances? That didn't go down very well, sure it didn't. I know, I... Listen, coming from RTE, I shouldn't be throwing any shapes up here. Sure, I shouldn't. Okay, fair play. Thank you very much, Minister. This is our fifth award of the evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a little bit of hush for this award, folks, please. Thank you. And we'll get through it really quickly, I promise. Just a little bit of hush, folks. Thanks. This award is the Age Friendly Environment Award. And it's sponsored by the Centre for Excellence in Universal Design at the National Disability Authority. And here to present the award on behalf of CEUD is Dr Jer Craddock. Good man, Jer. Now, let me tell you a little bit about this award. The built environment has a unique impact on the lives of all older people. Simple things like adequate public seating, level footpaths and appropriate crossing times of pedestrian crossings all have a huge impact on the ability of older people to be active in their towns and villages. Shh. This category recognises projects that bring about change in that built physical environment with older people in mind. And the projects shortlisted in this category are as follows. Making for a Better Kells, Creating an Accessible Kells, Prosper Meath. Let's have you up on stage. Don't be shy. Also shortlisted in this category, Project Seat and Retreat, Donnybrook Tidy Towns. And last, but not least, Dementia Friendly Garden, the Cavan Branch of Alzheimer's Society of Ireland. Hello, sir. Are you coming up? Congratulations. Who are you with? Brilliant. Well done. Hello. Hello. Pleasure to meet you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah, are you in RTE, are you? Yes, Environment as you mean. Sorry. Yes, yes. Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, see, I'm a North Sider, so I come the opposite way. But yeah. Well, yeah. Work's on. Thank you. Are you very good? Congratulations.
How does it feel to treat me like you do? When you laid your hands upon me and told me you were mine? Thought I was mistaken. I thought I heard your words. Tell me how do I feel? Tell me now how do I feel? Those who came before me lived through their locations. From the past until completion, they'll turn away no more. I still find it so hard to say what I need to say.
Tommy, Tommy. Tommy, not Tony. Yeah, just can't read my writing. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. And... And well done to all our finalists in this category, the Age Friendly Environment Award. Let's call on Jer now to announce our winner. Sorry, Rachel.
Stuck together. So Mayo win awards here and we also give out awards. So an Age Friendly Environment Award goes to Dementia Friendly Garden, Cavan Branch of Alzheimer's Society of Ireland.
Well done, Jer.
We win awards and give out awards.
Yes, yes, yes. Jer. Jer, they didn't get your good side. Back up. Well done, Jer. Thank you. And well done, Cavan, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Now, just very, very quickly, I need to make a quick housekeeping announcement. I've been asked to ask you, could a certain Garda Tommy Emmett identify himself, please? Garda Tommy Emmett. There he is. You're welcome, sir. Congratulations. Welcome. Shh. Good man, Tommy.
I know fellow policeman, he's always on the streets. A fat and jolly red-faced man, he really is a treat. He's too fine tall a policeman, he's never known to frown. But everybody says he is the happiest man in town. He laughs upon pinture, he laughs upon his beard. He laughs at everybody as he's walking down the street. He never can stop laughing, he says he's never tried. But once he did arrest a man and laughed until he cried. His jolly face is wrinkled and then he shut his eyes. He opened his great mouth, it was a wondrous size. He said, "I must arrest you." He didn't know what for, but then he started laughing until he cracked his jaw. So if you chance to meet him while walking down the town, just shake him by his fat old hand and give him half a crown. His eyes said they would sparkle, he'd gurgle with delight. But then you'd start him laughing with all his blessed might.
Well done Tommy. Congratulations. Well done Tommy. We need to get this man on crime call, Monday night. Tommy, you're booked. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have three awards to get through, just three. And I know that I will... Thank you. I know that you will give me your full and undivided attention because these are really, really worthy award winners. So please, let's have a little bit of hush. Three awards left, folks, three awards left. And we saw the wonderful Tommy a little earlier on doing the laughing piece. Where's Tommy? What a tonic. Thank you Tommy. And therefore this award, the sixth award is sponsored by Angora, Sheehanam. It's the Age Friendly Safety and Security Award. Let me tell you a little bit about it. Do you know what, if I was still a teacher, I'd bring all this gang down here, the Limerick Gang and the Cork Gang. I'd bring you up here and I'd put you in front of me. They couldn't care less. Okay, just a little bit of hush. Thank you folks. Thank you. Let me tell you about this award. Feeling safe and secure at home and when out and about greatly enhances the lives of older people. This category acknowledges the impact of community-based responses that enable older people to feel secure in their homes and in the wider community and to know what to do when they don't. Now Superintendent Kevin Daly is going to join us on stage for this particular award. Thank you Superintendent Daly. Meanwhile, we have two awards. Two shortlisted projects in this award rather. The first is Home Security Scheme Lock and Carbon Monoxide Alarm, South Dublin County Council. Let's have you on stage. Very shy. And the second shortlisted project in this category is Message in a Bottle, Dublin City Council. I think they're gone to enough to the stage. No rush. You're welcome. Well done. Congratulations. Which project is this? South Dublin. Well done. South Dublin first, congratulations. Well done. Well done sir. Why aren't you in school? Well done. Well done. How good are you? Ah, brilliant. He looks better. How many are you in? Six here. You look amazing. You're awesome, it's great. Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done, well done. Well done sir. Congratulations. Now Superintendent Daly will do the honors for us.
Good evening. And the Age Friendly Safety and Security Award goes to Home Security Scheme, South Dublin County Council.
Well done. Well done. And you know what? Exit stage left. We've been hearing an awful lot about supporting the older adults in our communities. But what about a big shout-out for our younger people in the audience today? And the sort of work that our students here... And I didn't catch their names, but they're from James CBS in Dublin. And well done. The little one is mortified and she's running back to her seat. Congratulations. And thank you Superintendent Kevin Daly. Our penultimate award tonight, folks, is the Age Friendly Business Innovation Award. This is sponsored by Chambers Ireland. We know that creating an enjoyable and accessible environment for older consumers pays dividends for businesses. Here we recognise initiatives that strive to improve the environment for older people as consumers. And here to present this particular award on behalf of Chambers is Mr Ian Tarbitt. Welcome to the stage. And the projects shortlisted in this category are as follows. We have three of them. Collaboration in Coquenni, Coquenni Age Friendly Business Recognition Programme. The Home Share Together Helping Each Other. Well done. And Coke Galway Meals for Health. Let's have all our shortlisted projects up on stage. For a photo with Ian and a certificate. And we will shortly announce our winners. If you don't mind, you can take the shortcuts if you like. Congratulations. Well done. Well done. Well done. Well done. Well done. Well done, next up. Well done, so I think you are... Who do we have next? We have Coke Share Together Helping Each Other? Sorry. Coke Galway. Well done. Okay Ian, it's going to do the honors, ladies and gentlemen, a little bit of hush. Our second-class award of the evening.
Thank you everyone, we're delighted to sponsor this award again this year. And the award goes to Meals for Health, Coke Galway.
Well done. Congratulations. And thank you Ian Tarbitt. Well done. All right. Last but definitely not least, ladies and gentlemen, our final award. You've been absolutely fantastic. You can exit stage left there, please. They don't want to leave. Okay, let's get on to our last award, folks. This one is sponsored by the Department of Health and the Health Services Executive. It is the Age Friendly Active and Healthy Aging Award. Now, we're nearly there, folks, and you've been absolutely wonderful. If I could just have a little bit of hush for this final award. And this is, as I said, the Age Friendly Active and Healthy Aging Award. Let me tell you a little bit about it. We're living for longer but remaining healthy and active in later years can be a real challenge. This award recognises those initiatives that optimise opportunities for good health in later years so that older people can continue to play an active role in community life. And as I said, this award is co-sponsored by the Department of Health and the HSC. And would you welcome here on stage to present this award, Dr Stephanie O'Keefe. Thank you Doctor. The projects shortlisted in this category, folks, are as follows. Guys. Donegal Intergenerational Choir. Well done. Donegal Age Friendly Alliance from Donegal County Council. One of my own favourite projects, I love the sound of it. Fish Farmers. Who are the fish farmers? The fish farmers all the way from Roscommon. We also have Tipperary Dance Platform. Healthy with Pronunciation, Las Muchas. Las Muchas. And last but not least, and I met these lovely people a little earlier on, Turin Cowell Community Group. Turin Cowell, actual retired projects. Well done Donegal. Let's have the fish farmers next. Congratulations. You're the fish farmer. Having all of your votes for the show now. Hello. Hello. Hello, well done. Who's this? This is... Oh, Las Muchas, Las Muchas. This is a Spanish show, isn't it? What does it mean? Oh, the Spanish, yes, yes, yes. Spanish. You're looking very healthy. Well done, Las Muchas. Take your place in the line, guys. Congratulations. Turin Cowell, yes. How are you? Well done. Hello, lovely to see you. You have a long trip, did you think, yeah? My toilet was already here. And Turin Cowell. We definitely will. Fingers crossed, folks. No, fingers crossed, fingers crossed. Take them to the stage there. And the winner is Stephanie will do the honors now. And the winner for Age Friendly Active and Healthy Aging Award goes to Donegal Intergenerational Choir. Well done, well done. Well done. Let it share, let it share, let's have to go home with the next chair. Congratulations. Well done, Donegal. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done, well done. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that is almost a wrap, almost a wrap. One final address and it will be quick, I'm told. This is Jackie McGuire. She's been referenced throughout the night, Chief Executive of Meads County Council. Will you give Jackie a round of applause for you?
Good evening. And I'm also very conscious, we've had a long night, so I'm going to dispense with about 20 or 30 pages I have here. There's a couple of things I really want to do and I'll do them very quickly because I don't want to get in the way of the rest of your evening. Firstly, just to, I really wanted to thank Dublin City Council and in particular Brendan Penny, or whatever he has disappeared, I know it's in the room, and a particular Beatrice. Thank you so much for putting all of this together. It is a great pleasure for me as Chief Executive and indeed everybody at Mead County Council that were hosting the National Shared Service. The programme itself has come a long way, a long, long way in 10 years. And in particular, I suppose, we really want to be able to acknowledge how it has flourished, how it has become sustainable and I think within local government, it will continue to grow and embed itself. And a particular reference to the items that Minister English spoke about. In particular, just two quick things that I suppose are news tonight. We've reached a key milestone this year when we officially became the first country in the world to achieve full affiliation to the World Health Organisation's Global Network. And that's a great achievement. And I suppose it is in recognition of how far the programme has come and what it can continue to achieve. And I suppose just to be able to say that the World Health Organisation are going to travel over here in December. They will award each local authority, each age friendly, with their affiliation membership. And they'll do that jointly with Ontishock, who'll formally launch the Shared Service initiative. And we've eventually got a date on that. It will be December the 16th in Slane in County Meads, which I'm delighted to be able to say. So you'll hear more about that in the coming days. Again, I just want to add my own thanks to all of the people that have been mentioned before. I'm not going to name check everybody because it's already been done tonight and I don't want to keep us any longer. But to the judges, to the National Advisory Group, to all our sponsors, thank you so much. Indeed, to all the projects, while we listed and we referenced 25 of them here tonight, as Minister English said, there was over 100 projects that put themselves forward. And without that, we wouldn't be able to have the awards this evening. So, look, we look forward to next year, it's in Clare. Pat Dowling, Chief Executive, can't back out now, we're going to Clare next year. I just want to just to thank again the older person councils. They work very hard with us and they really keep us on our feet. Also the NGO forum, and I'm delighted that Maurice O'Connell, who's current Chair, is here with us this evening. Thank you all again. Again, to all the people who assist us, and I know Jack Hees is here this evening. He does a lot of work with the Shared Service Unit in relation to training and has continued to do that and will do that. I really again want to thank, yeah, thank you. To thank all the Age Friendly Programme managers across all 31 local authorities. Thank you so much for what you do. To the new regional programme managers that are now in place, that's just been rolled out and we look forward to that going forward. Again, I just want to thank my own staff, headed up under the Department of Community with Barry Lynch, but to Catherine, to Emir, to Rachel, thank you so much. I particularly want to mention Stephanie McCarr... Steph... Oh, not Stephanie. I'm getting myself confused now. To Sylvia, who's wandering around here. Sylvia put a huge amount of work into tonight, working with Beatrice in Dublin City. And I really wanted to put your hands together and say thank you, we're going to have a little eye. And look, before I conclude, there's one very special presentation I want to make this evening. I think the Age Friendly Programme in itself wants to make this presentation. As I mentioned, it has come from strength to strength. But 10 years ago, the first Age Friendly Programme initiated itself in County Louth under the leadership of the then county manager, Con Murray. And through a strategic think tank called the Aging Well Network. At a national level, Con was a key champion and ambassador for this programme. He recognised both the challenges and the opportunities that the Age Friendly Programme presented and was pivotal in garnering the support of his local government colleagues and the wider external stakeholders. When he moved to Limerick City and County Council, he took that learning with him and applied it locally to create another strong and healthy programme. He continued to create opportunities as a member of the National Implementation Group and more recently the National Advisory Group, following its transition into the shared service hosting. He has chaired the National Chairs of Age Friendly Alliances up to his recent retirement from the local government sector in August of this year. Without Con's time, commitment and leadership, I have no doubt this programme would not have evolved into the level that it has today. I suppose in the words of the great Martin Luther King, "A genuine leader is not a searcher for consensus, but a molder of consensus." And Con certainly did that in all its glory and all its commitment that he had to the Shared Service Programme. So on behalf of all my colleagues within the wider Age Friendly Ireland Programme and all the stakeholders involved in the Con and the local government sector, we want to thank you especially for what you've done and for being initiating the programme and seeing it. It must be a great tribute to you to see where the programme is today. And without further ado, Con, we'd like to make a very small presentation to you just to recognise that. So if you could come forward, please. The only thing I didn't mention is he's also a Mead man. Just finally, as I hand back, can I just thank you so much and for really a fabulous evening and it's, thank you so much. Thank you, Jackie, it's a pleasure. Thank you, Jackie. A very, very quick presentation to all our judges now. Our judges, they are Tom Dowling. Tom goes home with a great big bunch of flowers, as does Orla Carmody, Bernie O'Brien and Mary Cogden. Thank you very much, judges. And folks, that is just about a wrap. Would there be a bit of dancing in you yet, maybe? Yeah? A couple of minutes? Okay. Does anybody know a song? Ladies and gentlemen, that's my lot for this evening, you've been absolutely wonderful. I didn't have to harangue you or barrack you like a fish wife. Thank you very much, you are absolutely brilliant. The night is but a pop, we'll have music in about five minutes' time. This guy, well, I've never heard of him, it's Mickey, sorry Ricky, no, it's not Mickey, it's not Ricky. Well, I tell you what, you'll find out in a couple of minutes. Ni le briehe, s'vi ne osle.